We'll open the regular session of the town council for December 15th. Do you have your leave?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every due justice for all.
First item on the agenda is public comments, okay? And I'd like to limit it to four to five minutes if you can. And also, when you do comment, please stand and give your name for recording.
Okay. They don't like to use more than four or five minutes. I'll send my copy for my comments by group writing. But I do probably want to read the last page.
That's fine. Go ahead.
Reading this, all of us would probably take more time to log. Okay, Michael Getty, Lakeview, Oregon. I'm here for two reasons. One, to gain your support for county ordinance number 112, which is up for vote to the people in November. Either vote for or against the marijuana commercial growing and processing and retail sales in, under county district, throughout Lake County, under the county commission of jurisdiction. Now, it does not involve Paisley or the town. And I understand that the town right now has already decided not to opt out. Now, first of all, I want you to know, and I know you're all aware, that measure number 91 and the growing of marijuana commercially and for retail sale for a great time is against the law, federal law. And the Oregon Attorney General and the Secretary of State both knew that before they allowed the measure to fill on the ballot. It's in direct conflict with Article 6, paragraph 2, the U.S. Constitution, which is supremacy clause, which says that federal law trumps state law. So even though the people passed measure 91, it's still illegal as far as federal law goes. Now, what the federal government's going to do about this, we don't know. They could change their mind, but right now they're not enforcing it. Colorado, Washington, and Oregon, the three states, there's allowing recreational use and commercial marijuana. But we're looking at a federal election in November and things might change. But right now, the issue is, what are we going to do about Lake County? And I figure, and I hope, that county ordinance 112 passes and bans the commercial growing and processing, et cetera, and retail sales of marijuana in Lake County and within the jurisdiction of the county commissioners. My second purpose to be here is to gain your support to ban the sale of recreational and medical marijuana within your jurisdiction. And the reasons for that are all spelled out in my written comments. And myself, as well as others in the community, are concerned about the proliferation of use, sale, and abuse of marijuana and other drugs in Lake County and in the town of Lakeview. The establishment of pot shops, whether for medical or recreational use, is hypocritical in every sense of the word. The local school district, parents, and other organizations, whether governmental or medical, preach to our children not to use drugs. Yet, to allow pot shops to be publicly visible, then what are we telling our children? Combine that with the private growing marijuana for recreational use, adolescents in Lake County and the town of Lakeview will be exposed to the use and abuse of the drug on a day-to-day basis. Another concern I have is the effect of water use and quality of that water by commercial growers who have proposed to establish greenhouses within the jurisdiction of the town of Lakeview. For the most part, Lakeview has good quality of water, yet I have noticed on occasion that it has a rotten egg odor, which is due to pumping from wells to make up for the less spring water we have, especially during droughts. I've also read newspapers in the past that the landowners adjacent to commercial marijuana operations are complaining about the smell that emanates from the sites. Do the proposed operations and the town, do the proposed operations and the town have provisions to control and eliminate such disorders? Another concern is the migration of drug users from other counties and communities that have opted out. What kind of people will move to Lakeview and Lake County? Will they be crime and abusive users? What effect will they have on our social services and the crime rate? Therefore, I think, and many of us believe it is imperative, that the town council modify its current ordinance regarding the establishment of medical and recreational sale of marijuana and ban such within their jurisdiction before it becomes established. And also, support county ordinance number 112, which bans the commercialization aspects of marijuana within the town jurisdiction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any other public comments?
I just want to, for the record, as always, thank you. I was here a couple months ago, maybe a month ago, and I spoke to you folks and mentioned that I would be back to chat with you guys about the liaison positions. The liaison position?
Yes.
And I see they're on the agenda. And I have some questions. I just wanted to let you know that I still have the questions and I'll be asking those when you get to that topic. So, okay? So I'm going to ask them now, I'll ask them when you get to that topic. Okay? I don't have any comments right now, I just have questions. Okay?
Well, maybe you can answer your questions before we get there, if you have, or if you wanted to wait until we start.
I just want to wait. Basically, what, you know, one of the biggest question I have was, I mentioned before, that the county commissioners also are liaisons for different departments. But the difference, one of the big differences is that the people that they oversee, not all of them, but some of the people that they oversee as liaisons, they, those are elected physicians, and they are not the direct supervisors of those people, the citizens of Lake County are. But that's different here, because the people that you people supervise, like the police chief, water master, different people, they're not, excuse me, they're not elected officials. They work for someone. And one of the biggest questions I have is, now that you're going into new liaisons, who do they work for? And what authorities do the liaison physicians hold over these individuals? Like yourself, you know, in the past, you helped the liaison position for public safety in police department. And you don't need to answer, no, I don't need an answer, but you, no. Are you the supervisor of those individual, the police chief? And/or is Ray Sims the supervisor? And the same thing. There's assignments made, are you, does that mean that, I don't know who's covering 911?
Let me, let me help you out here, Orlando. The individuals that you mentioned, employees of the town, work for the town of Lakeview, all right? But by charter and by contract, personnel decisions are vested within the authority of the town manager.
So everyone works for Ray Sims?
No, everybody works for the town, but personnel issues, personnel matters fall within the jurisdiction of the town manager.
Okay. So what authorities or duties do the liaisons have?
Okay. The purpose of a liaison is for issues and information to flow freely between the town department and the town council. And that's it.
They're to share information?
Sharing information.
Okay. They don't have any supervisory disciplinary?
No, no.
Okay, it's all Ray Sims?
Yeah.
So if somebody's hired, it's Ray Sims doing hiring. These people, do they have a vote in the hiring?
Yeah, Orlando typically, when we're, when we have a hiring committee for an employee or a department, you know, we have three, maybe sometimes four or five persons on the interview committee, and it usually involves a town council person. Myself, choose, you know, maybe a department employee, possibly, you know, in the case of a chief of police, possibly somebody from OSD, you know, that would be a person to work with. So, you know, we would make that committee when the time came.
Do these, the town council members, do they have the, can they request to be on those selection committees?
Request or volunteer offer, you know, all solicit equally.
So they can request it. Mike wants to be on the committee for the new 911 person.
Sure. I think he would let me know.
And if you're on that committee and you're interviewing a slate of candidates, you go through the interviewing process, if Mike Warren were on the committee, he'd say, Ray, this is my opinion, I think this person is the most qualified candidate, this is the person I think the town should hire. But the communication between the potential employee and the town is through the town manager.
Okay. Okay, I'll make one last comment here. I think that sometimes change is good. And you have some new council members here, you have some people that come into some different type of positions, like Mike Warren, who's now, and I apologize for this, they voted you into?
A president.
The president, okay.
Council president.
Council president. So he's in a new type of position, we have two new council members. I think it's a good time to kind of look at that list and say, hey, should we make some changes, should we get some new blood in here, some new ideas or whatever? Because we do everyone, there's that need. And sometimes you get to the point where you say, hey, it's, this is the way we've done it for years, and let's continue doing it that way, and maybe it needs to change. And I don't have any particular area, but I'm saying, hey, change is good. Personally, I'd like to see that, I don't have anything particular here, but.
If I may point out, Orlando, we have some vacant, because of the two new council members or the two that resigned and have changed, we have some departments or committees that are not spoken for at the moment. Our first meeting in January of each year is the organizational meeting for the town, and typically, at that meeting is when the council would review the slate of all of the, all of the liaisons and, you know, switch, you know, make choices, whatever they want to do, you know, that's a council, that's a council prerogative, that would be our first meeting. And I couldn't tell you what date that is this year, but it'd be the second Tuesday of January would be when they might switch. I would expect, at this point, they'll just assign liaisons or divide up the existing vacant ones with the people who are new on the council.
So the citizens of Lakeview still have the time to provide some input to the council and yourself in regards to the liaison positions?
Sure, the council will be the ones that make that decision.
So today, you're, what are you coming today?
Today, I believe, what they've reviewed and they're going to maybe split up the existing vacant.
So you are going to make some assignments today?
I think they will. They'll be their decision, but I think they will.
Some suggestions.
That's what I.
If the new members have got enough information that they feel they can volunteer for something that is not going to be too scary.
Because I think, you know, certain things happen in the town, and we go back to liaisons and say, who's the liaison on that? We need to talk to that person. And sometimes people say, well, I thought that person had a little more authority in regards to this, that, you know, he could say, hey, guys, you know, cut it out, I don't like the way you're plowing, I don't like the way you're driving. And I think that's, you know, that's, but here is possibly you folks do not have disciplinary authority to tell somebody, you know, someone driving too fast, an employee driving too fast, to say, hey, slow down, you know, or.
We don't have law enforcement.
What's that?
We don't have law enforcement responsibilities.
Mr. Gonzalez, Mr. Gonzalez, the way, the way we operate is that we give Ray those responsibilities, because none of us frankly want them. He has never, to my knowledge, ever made a unilateral decision where he has not consulted us. Our only authority is when we sit here in a meeting. We can't make decisions outside of this meeting, basically. We can suggest, we can say what's going on, and he'll give us the answers, but this is the only place we make decisions. And Ray has been really wonderful about asking us and, you know, considering, well, you know, what do we do? This is a problem, how do you guys want it handled? And we talk it over and make that decision, mostly unanimously. So if you think we're going to those liaison meetings and pushing our weight around, we have no weight. That's not where, that's not where our power is. What little bit of power comes in just discussion between all of us.
The bottom line is, we ought to work together to make the town functional and run well. So that's, that's all of our goals.
And he does not have a power complex, actually.
Well, I think just for clarification purposes, if you're in the newspaper, I think it'd be nice to let the people know in the county that, because people will ask, is that this man here is the hiring and firing individual? He's the one that signs papers. So if we have complaints about employees' conduct or performance, we need to talk to Ray. And then that needs to be, you know, some people may not even think that's.
We're telling you that if Ray gets those, he will bring those to us, and we will make that decision, all of us. But at that level.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. I want to take up the whole meeting.
Thank you for your comments and questions.
Mayor Wenzel, I have not met her, but I believe, you know, I've talked to her on the phone, but I believe this must be Mira Norris?
Yes.
And she is the new chip coordinator at the hospital, and I talked to her Friday afternoon and invited her to come and introduce herself.
Very good. I did actually just meet her a few hours ago, very casually, but please, go ahead and let us know what you're up to.
Oh, okay. I wasn't expecting that. But I'm Mira Norris, I'm the community health improvement manager. So I'm new to Lakeview, and it's been really great to meet everybody here in Lakeview. They've been so welcoming to me, and I'm really excited to make some programs and hear what the needs are and implement them into the community. So, thank you for having me.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate you coming here and working with us. Okay. Yes. Frank, we know your name.
Yeah, well, this is the first meeting I've been back to since Ray and Darwin have been on board. I'm Frank Vaughn, and Darwin's seen me many a number of times, right here in other places too. Glad to be back.
We are glad you came back to see us again.
You always keep us in line.
We were pretty spry too there, Frank, so.
Okay, additional public comment. Thank you all for coming. Communications comments, informational items, any questions or comments on those, the letter Ray has submitted to NAPA congratulating them on their remodeling and pending move to the new building.
It does look very nice, too.
It does, it's very nice, yeah. And we are done with it, but the Christmas opening agenda for our Christmas celebration, and thank you to all the people that took part in that, and to our town crew for putting up our decorations.
You're welcome.
And putting the lights on the tree.
And I'd like tomorrow, the new decorations that were purchased for Easter are here, and I think, weather permitting, tomorrow it'll start.
Very good. Love you.
Can I, can I make a comment?
You may.
I would like to thank Jeff and his crew for what they did down Main Street and stuff, and they did a wonderful job there, especially out of that wind and stuff.
Yeah.
I got to give them credit, to get up there and what they're doing.
They did a good job. Okay. Any other comments on that? Okay, department reports. We have, please, with acting chief Matt Gray here, any additions to your report?
Well, we're in the hiring process for two particular spots, and we've got lateral backgrounds and interviews coming up with prospective recruits.
Yes. We're hoping to be able to get that accomplished before too long. Thank you, Matt. Scott Utley is not here. Fire Dennis is here. Anything to add to your report?
Hunting seasons are over.
Yeah. Public works, any additional comments?
No, just like Ray mentioned, we're going to spruce up D Street a little bit tomorrow, and the new decorations that came in are really nice.
Good, good.
They look sharp.
We'll have to drive through town tomorrow, late afternoon, to see what it looks like. Yeah, thank you. Managers report, Anderson and Herring, we do not have a report this night. And the town manager, Mr. Sims, any additions to your report?
I don't have anything particular. Probably plenty, but I'll save. I'm sure answering any questions.
Any questions from the council? Managers report?
I, the other thing Jeff and I talked about with the water tanks, and I see here, you know, you've got to hear what they've claimed, the one on South End, put a new pump installed. I would like to see that noted in the papers so the public knows that has been done.
Okay.
In addition, and I, I know we talked about it before, they did some extensive flushing of lines, you know, a little longer period, and we have some more maintenance things planned. Jeff and I talked about maybe having a work session coming up in, probably in January, but talked about the department, a little of some plans, and, you know, things that we're working on, talking about doing that we hope will help improve water quality some more. We hope to keep rains to so the springs run a long time.
Yeah. Okay. We have next the consent calendar, which actually has, it's not on here, but the work session minutes from November 24th and irregular session minutes from November 24th. Any comments or corrections on those?
Just a simple title on the council minutes for November 24th, public president, Dan Shown, H.
Oh, O U N, okay, yes. Okay, you will accept a motion to accept the consent calendar?
So moved with correction.
We have a motion to accept the consent calendar with corrections, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed, unanimous. Mayor council manager updates. I've met with Ray a few times concerning his hiring, and I think that's, and other items that have been on the agenda that we've discussed, so that's kind of, I think.
Did you say we're discussing the retirement policy?
No.
Police hiring.
Hiring.
Hiring, all of it.
Yeah. Talking about the police department.
Yeah, I do a little, a little bit, so you have some slack.
Sharon?
I've been working primarily with the chamber department getting ready for our January 9th gala, Curry Jr., all to attend, and especially if you have any people you want to nominate for junior or senior citizen, please, I can make those applications available too, or you can get them from the chamber. I think we're a little low on nominations, so start looking at the, we all go to a plethora of meetings, so we're seeing a lot of people, and sometimes they're the same people in leadership roles, and we need to get those people recognized. So think about the senior or junior first citizen and applications for that.
Ray, anything to report?
The only thing I had, if Ray or anybody ever found out about what I've mentioned about the game that the kids are playing, the only reason I brought it up was because people were asking me about it.
Sure. I did talk with Matt about the article, it was in the paper, and Matt, you know, wanted to reiterate to me that he didn't disagree at all with the comments that were made by, I believe it was Cliff Hargis in his interview, that, you know, listed a number of concerns that he had. You know, there haven't been issues with this game so far, but Mike, or rather, Matt wanted to also point out that, to him, there was another significant concern, and that is the issue of trespass. And Matt's article or his interview did bring up that there is an issue of trespass, and whenever kids do.
See, this is.
Or out doing that kind of stuff, you know? Especially in today's climate.
Well, I would call your concerns have brought up mainly.
Matt didn't necessarily mean to, you know, the article may have gotten misread, misprinted, like he wasn't supporting the game so much as he was supporting the concerns that others had brought up, and that this game so far hasn't caused a problem, but it could.
Hopefully.
I'm only aware of one issue of trespassing that's happened, and it happened on a weekend when Officer Sisman was on, he dealt with it, the kids were respectable. Every time I've contacted the kids playing the game, they've been very respectful, they've been very open, they call the police department before they start playing the game, and we just haven't had many issues with them at all.
Good. On that point, I'm going to say that it seems weird that we would allow and encourage kids to play cops and robbers. It's just like, a lot of people say, you know, why, what it indicates to me also, along with some other people, is appears a memory, there's, I don't have any teenage kids, that there's not enough other healthy activities available for our children, our kids, or for the people's children here in town. And then we have to be playing cops and robbers on private property, and children using cars, and it's not like they're bribing, and that's not safe to me. That's not like a thing that we should be encouraging, hey, we should be encouraging, you know, this man over here, Getty, Mr. Getty, you know, he's saying, hey, there's certain things that, you know, we shouldn't be encouraging the kids to do, but I don't think we should be encouraging the kids to play cops and robbers. That's not the kind of strange community.
I don't think anyone's encouraging them to, if it's not from the police department or anything like that. They just have been, they've been very respectful and have not been a problem.
Well, you know, it's the same thing, it's just encouraging something, can't we encourage something else healthier than that? Support, or against committing support for more activities, like I said, I'm not in the loop, but years ago, when I was with Estados Unidos, I think it was a church over there, right at the corner from the, from the library, they would have fighty dances for the teenagers, supervised dances for the teenagers. I don't know if those are occurring or not, but I sure would like to see teenage dances, supervised teenage dances versus cops and robbers games amongst the streets. It encourages, I don't think it's a positive game. It's like, you know, I mean, you know, you encourage kids to watch.
Well, right now, there's not a whole lot for the kids to be doing.
Right, because not a lot, you know, but we might be able to support some other things.
Though I certainly know that.
Kids have been playing cops and robbers since I could remember.
That's what I was going to say.
The wrestlers and cheerleaders, you know, vigilantes. I think, one of the things, again, it comes back to us in a sense, we have to have faith in our law enforcement agencies, that they know what's going on. If I think it starts to become a problem, they will deal with it, and they will deal swiftly, and they will make sure that that lesson takes. You're not going to get a bunch of kids who want to run around at night chasing each other into a Friday night dance. Maybe I'm wrong, but I've worked for a long time with kids, and if it's not hurting anybody yet, I think Mike has made his presence very clear, and they've been respectful of the law, and tried their best not to get into those things. Now, could it go wrong quickly? Yes, and that's why he's watching, I think.
Okay. Darren?
Attended Mr. and Mrs. Honker, Ms. Honker, presentation that the mentor program put on, and, you know, I got the great privilege of being one of the judges, one of the five judges. But I did want to give, you know, public admission to Kathy Miles, director, you know, she's obviously gone through some hard times, but she's, she's always run a wonderful program.
Yes, sure.
That, if you missed it, you really missed out, not to put a plug in for the paper, but they will be selling for $10.
The DVD is.
I will certainly be buying one, because it was, it was a wonderful event. I wish I could have the whole family there that evening, but, you know, Sammy Withers is also involved as coordinator, Jessica Christiansen, they all did a wonderful job. Also, Linda Conroy.
Also, Linda Conroy and Jennifer Stevens do just an amazing job getting, getting the youth that are involved. And I'm sure there's going to be longer articles, I don't need to go on, but, you know, I really appreciate those in the community that supported that program.
The DVDs should be ready by Thursday or Friday. It's currently processing right now, the videos are all done.
As a side note, Ms. Norris has some plan for children, for particularly for girls. Would you like to kind of give us an idea about that?
Sure, now that I see the nature of this meeting, I can kind of speak to what I'm doing with CHIP. So we put in for some grants on December 2nd. And some of them are incentive funds, and that means that they are funds that are approved. And so we're doing a couple of different projects. One of them is a girls empowerment program, which I worked on in Arizona. And it is going to be through E S D and the schools. It'll be for the middle school and the high school, so there'll be two different groups. And it'll be 20 weeks long. They will have an incentive to be part of it, and the facilitators will be paid. So we're really excited about it, it's had success all over the nation. So we know that the program is received really well by girls, they get excited, it increases their self-esteem. It gets them to learn about health issues. So that is one of the approved funds that for sure is going to be implemented. And then another one is, we don't know if we're going to get it or not, but it's going to be in collaboration with Jamie Davis at O S C's extension. And it'll be youth health advocates, and they will be trained, youth health advocates that will also receive a statement. And we'll have two facilitators, like adult mentors for that program that will also be paid here in Lake County and then, or excuse me, Lakeview. And then one up in Christmas Valley. So those are two programs. And another program for, for women out of the churches and the senior center to also receive a statement and go through health training to teach their centers about health issues. So my goal with CHIP is really to not just disseminate health information, but to empower leadership within the community with also some economic gain, because I know that that's a big focus and need of the community for people to have that economic hope, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Last thing I just want to say is that I learned at the mentor program, you know, the Mr. and Mrs. Honker, that there are kids on the waiting list. They said they were 10 that night and, you know, it's pretty sad. We need to, you know, as a community, reach out and kind of help support that program and, you know, sign up to be a mentor if we have the time. And it's only one hour a week.
Mr. White?
A couple of my liaison appointments kind of deal with the same thing. And you guys were very much involved in one of them, and that was a long-term enterprise zone agreement that we just, with the county. And I want to thank the county commissioners and the town council for coming to an agreement on something that we negotiated for a long time on. And it finally is coming to culmination. And it's a big promise for our community for a $220 million facility like this to come to our community. And I welcome them wholeheartedly. And I want to say that, they say that things are separated by six degrees. And I was kind of astounded that when I read an announcement that where I was born, a company called Jewel in Hobbs, New Mexico, and I don't know that, but they are a very front runner in the, I guess, CO2 arena for the capturing of CO2 and reusing it to make products. And so the Jewel Corporation has announced that, along with Red Rock announcement, that they have merged or are in the process of merging. That's expected to take place this month. So if you hear things, you know, I announced it on the radio a week or two ago. But it is something that I think that if you hear something, it's kind of like that there's something, I will agree that in my looking into it, both the heads of those corporations, Jeff said that they're very committed to let me, so just in order to pass that along.
Very good news. Thank you. Okay, we will move on to old business, which is none.
I mentioned just the COVID.
Yes, I'm sorry, Ray.
I just want to remind people about Christmas things going on downtown. Last weekend was the holiday fair. This, this coming weekend, I believe they're doing the live nativity at the gathering place or the, what are the churches?
Is it the play this weekend also?
Pardon?
The play that they're putting out?
There are a play this weekend.
There's the cantata this weekend on Saturday.
That's right.
And the live nativity is on Sunday. There is a play in New Pine Creek that's, that the school down there, State Line, is holding. I believe that's next Thursday.
I hope that there was going to be a play done over at the gathering.
I think that's tied in with the live nativity scene, which is happening Sunday at 4:30 PM.
Thank you.
Also, Mike mentioned Red Rock and, you know, we will tomorrow, we have received a land use application. You know, I've talked before about the urban growth boundary adjustment that needs to take place. And, you know, some of the land use processes beyond what the county has approved already for them. And so that, that's in the early stages of beginning now. It will involve quite a bit of our time, I believe, as we go forward. It will be several planning commission and town council, as well as county planning mission and county commissioner meetings and probably some more joint meetings in order to streamline that process to get it moved along as we, as we work through it. So I just want you to know that that's, that that phase of this project is, I don't think, yeah, so. Stay tuned.
Thank you.
Also, I came on Facebook today that they moved the trees over to the old.
True Value store.
True Value store.
Yeah, the Festival of Trees, the, the community partnership has been putting together. We brought water issues and the old Trade West building, roof leaks. And although I think maybe the drips are slowing down because it's been a little drier, you know, it is, it is too wet. So they're moving over to the old True Value building. And they're in the process of moving them today.
And that's great, there's some beautiful trees there.
They are really pretty, I think there's 10 of them. And, you know, 42nd group is here, one of them is there at the hospital, I believe, Lashwab.
True Value.
Ah, man, a number of people, but they're beautiful.
They all donated the trees with decorate.
Nice addition to the Christmas spirit. Anyway, so enjoy.
Do they need any help moving everything over?
Is that already done?
I don't know if they're finished, so when we get here, Matt, check.
I talked with Karen Bunch during lunch, and she said they were in the process of moving them early this afternoon. They may have needed police help in blocking off the road because moving trees is one thing, moving fully decorated trees is another matter, so. They may have recruited police or sheriff's office for assistance. So I think they're okay at this point, but you might want to double check, see if the trees have been moved at this point, if you wanted to help out.
I was over there in front of that building, 10 o'clock or so, and there was a bunch of people moving trees. They may have everything moved over by now.
Okay, old business none, and we will move on to new business. First item is liaison positions. We discussed some of the, most of these in our work session before. And so I guess what I'd like the new members to do is decide of vacant positions, which ones interest you. And as Ray said earlier, we also in January make, make the formal appointments and change things that we need to change for the year, so. Go ahead.
Do you want a school owner pick?
You want mine, my pick?
Well, you can find it out.
We've already discussed. Yeah, I'm interested in the fire.
Let me jot it down as you go in here.
Okay. Christmas committee. Labor negotiations. Public works. And stewardship.
All right, and the rest, which are air quality, finance.
The finance.
Just once a year, oh yeah, you guys were talking about.
Yeah, I think traditionally it's been the council president or the mayor that do that.
I remember one, that one.
When they've done.
Shooting range, ag farm, the schools, the airport advisory, and then the financial review there for April, May, and June.
So those will be, I guess we can say temporary. And if anything comes up between now and then, it's, we might have a motion to approve those appointments by the council.
If I, if I may add something, I, listening to Mayor reminded me, I've, I've been working on the CHIP project at the hospital. And I enjoy it and I want to continue to do what I can there. But I have a competing meeting on, on Thursday nights with the, with the CHIP meeting as well. And so I would like for you, when you start looking at these in January, to think about if there's one of you that might be interested in also working in that group. The more there, the better, really.
And it's held every other month, so.
Is it an evening meeting or afternoon or?
So it's the last Thursday of every month at 5:30 to about 7:30.
Last Thursday of every other.
Oh, every other month, correct, yeah. It gives an opportunity to also voice where funding might go, so we would love to have your input.
One question I had too was the housing authority, is there representation at all within the community? And I know we're represented by Cleveland County Housing Authority.
Right, we don't have, it's never killed. Yeah, we're not a member of that.
We used to be on that board, but it fell apart.
Contact, just if they're interested in having a member for a town. Because I served on the housing authority, not here, which also serves for the county.
Well, yeah, we, that would be good to have a representation.
Yeah, I'd like to do it, I'd love to.
I'll give you the contact personally in Cleveland, that they manage the facility here.
Mayor, if I might weigh in in regards to the vacant positions and just to remind you that I had mentioned a few meetings ago that I had an interest in one of those positions that is available there. And I understand that the election as president of the council, that perhaps, I may sound like I'm grabbing for titles. But I still lack, I feel, any, and I have served through three terms. This is my third term, I'm appointed and elected. And I still have not ever had an opportunity to be a liaison to any of our departments within the town of Lakeview. I requested that a couple of months ago and said that, well, since you were going to be absent, I think, in the next meeting, that perhaps we should put it off. So after hearing John describe to me what are ordinance, and I have not gone back and looked at it as finally, as our attorney does, and that's good, that he watches over it that way for us. But I just wanted to say that since he said that next month, and that's only, you know, maybe the way. That we perhaps should take a look at it all at that time rather than, I don't know. And I, like I said, I don't want to sound like I'm grabbing, but I feel like I, I need to have a tie with, with some department within the town. And I've never had that opportunity, so I asked for that a few meetings ago. And now, you know, we've just kind of handed them out, and so.
Well, we did.
No, they volunteered that we haven't had it anymore.
And I volunteered a few meetings ago for one of those that was.
Okay, well, we will definitely take that into consideration.
All right.
And I think that's very.
And along those lines, I think that each of us should have one of the departments that we're overlooking. You know, so, because I.
Well, you're working with Ray.
Yeah, exactly. I realize, I fully understand that we are not to have interference with the staff. That's part of our pilot, your council rules.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, comments? We will therefore close the meeting at.
Oh, wait, you have one of the right items.
Oh my gosh, yes, sorry, sorry people. The memorandum of understanding and the support for county museum. Another thing we've discussed in our work session. And, oh, we did discuss making some changes to the draft, which we were looking at. So, council members, what would you like to do?
I like the way the draft was drawn up. I mentioned it to John when he was going over, that I saw some fine points that were made in that they were in agreement with what was discussed in negotiations between me and Ray and the county. And so I feel that it covers us in regards to everything that was discussed in those negotiations. And I would recommend that we move forward with this memorandum of understanding with the county. But I think that if there's been some concerns, well, then perhaps we should discuss those.
Yes, Sharon, you had some concerns that you wanted to discuss, so.
I am adamantly opposed to any kind of agreement with the county unless we absolutely lock down that our $10,000 contribution would go to the Schmink. And that, I don't remember how you put it, but, but we make it, and maybe make even a budget item. What I don't want to see is that the county can take that $10,000 that we will give up from our agreement with Red Rock, and they can put it into their general fund and use it for any of the museums within the county. I want to see, and maybe, maybe in a year or two that would change, but I want to see us establish the Schmink Museum as ours. And we're not going to do it unless we put our cash there. So I would not, this might, I have one vote, but I won't vote for it unless it narrows it down to the Schmink, at least in this initial proceeding.
I agree with Sharon on that because that museum has been here forever and ever and ever. I want to keep it. And I don't want to see everything disappear out of it and it not be there at all. It needs, it needs our support more than the other that we.
And I believe that the county already has the budgetary system set up to protect the Lake County Museum and any of the other museums that they work with. I don't want them saying, woo-hoo, now we have an extra $10,000, let's cut our budget. I want it to go to the Schmink and establishing that as a county museum. And we can rethink that later, once it's done, perhaps. But initially, that's what we agreed to. That's what, what item number was that? Oh, 2A says it's to the Schmink Museum. And then you get down to number four, and it becomes all the counties in Lake County.
All the museums.
All the museums. Excuse me.
Darren?
Well.
I can still say no.
I definitely understand, you know, the concerns that have been raised, again now, but also during the work session. You know, this agreement I, I would agree with, council president, Warren, that Article 2A under the agreement, you know, this agreement is binding only upon, you know, the county acquiring the Schmink Museum and maintaining that museum. It says that specifically in A. And so I think that we, we could therefore, you know, if we look at the county budget over the next 15 years, as we, you know, it's a public document, we can look at it, look at their allotted amount to that budget on the museums. And if it seems like they're, you know, skimming off the top this $10,000 and just, you know, never really added it, then we could certainly come back and say, you know, they haven't, and we'd have proof that they weren't really, you know, implementing this agreement. And to, you know, to the, certainly the intent that we are agreeing to. And so I think this covers us, I think, you know, we, council did a good job preparing it. You know, this specific, I think enough that it covers us, that we can get out of it upon a 30-day written, actually doesn't say, you know, 30-day, but, you know, written mutual consent. You know, and so, you know, that argument could may have, but I think that the county, I'm not speaking for them, but I do believe that they intend fully to put it where, you know, they're agreeing to in this agreement. you know, they're agreeing to in this agreement, to put it. So, I would be in favor of approving it as written.
And I would just make mention in those negotiations with the county, it was pointed out, and the reason that museums came up is because of the heritage of Lake County and also of what, as you other councilors have said, we need to restore and make sure that it's available for many in the future to realize what was here. And unless it's saved now and all, we're not gonna be able to realize that later on. But I think that with our M.C. chuck wagon exhibit and with the county museums being in the Schmink, in the Lake County Museum, that we have a lot to be thankful for, and it will be an attribute to our community. And so, I think that was the general discussion was to make even stronger, if in fact they acquire the Schmink, and hopefully that all goes well. That was something that we were not privy to, that was something the county was negotiating on, and I don't know how they stand on that. As you could tell in the last meeting, it was still kind of, still under scrutiny, and we couldn't openly divulge everything until they said we could. So, until they get it all lined up, and that's covered in here, until they acquire it and are operating it, they want, and Red Rock is paying the monies, it's not gonna be anything that is a burden on us, so.
I still don't like number four, and it says if the county agrees following us receipt a payment from the town to spend the entirety of that payment during ensuing twelve months on county museums, not on the Schmink, but on county museums. And that means we give them that right. I don't care what it says up there in 2A, it says county museums there. I would rather have it read on this, than to spend that money on the Schmink Museum unless otherwise agreed, jointly agreed or something. But I just, I don't know. I have a commitment to the Schmink, maybe a little different. And we worked really hard saving it from those rip-off old ladies in the D.A.R., excuse that expression, but, and maybe my trust score for the county sometimes is debatable.
During the discussion, there was two points that were brought up that people, you know, wanted to discuss further. And one was what Sharon just said, that the money we give to them would be used for the Schmink Museum only. The second item was that the county have this budget, a separate budget item on how that money is spent on the Schmink, so that we have some verification of that. So, I guess the next thing is if the county, if people wanna make motions for one or other of those, then we can vote on that, and we can make changes to this memorandum that would reflect those items that we voted on.
Could we take it to, or send it to the county commissioners and say that we have looked at it, perhaps under, like you said, if a motion is made, that this is what the council is looking at at this point? I don't know, Sharon, I'm not sure how you feel comfortable in including that.
Well, I'm pretty single-minded on this, so it's based on, there's, for me, there isn't a lot of compromise on this. It should, when we held that memorable meeting with the county, and we agreed to this, it was specifically all the way through money to the Schmink. If we get, you know, if we go with the 60-40 split, then we would like you to donate back $10,000 to the Schmink Museum. And that's what we agreed to. This changes it. And, you know, I don't care what their intention, or we think their intention is, if it doesn't say it here, they don't have to do it. They could take that $10,000 and put it in any of the museums. They're not likely to put it down at RMC, let me tell you. But they could put it wherever they wanted to, because that clause, right, that sentence right there says they can. And I just don't like that. So, that, you know, that's me being conciliatory.
And perhaps with you making the motion that that's how we proceed, maybe we should send it over to the county, have a little talk.
Do we have to make a motion? Do we say, just send them a memorandum that says we would rather, say red like this?
If I may, if you wanna make changes, you should, you know, it's going to go to them as a draft, because they may also have things that they want to. You know, we agreed to get them something, you know, it's your intentions, it puts in writing the concept that we've been talking about in the legal format. And if you wanna, if you make a motion to add something, make some changes, I'll have John make that change. It'll still be draft, stamped, and I'll send it to them tomorrow with a cover letter explaining what the changes are, what your intentions are. Or if you leave it like it is, you'll go there with a cover letter saying, here's our intentions, and it'll, but it'll still be a draft. Once they then have either massaged it or agreed to it, then we'll have John prepare a final document that'll end be for yours and the county's signature.
So, quickly, I appreciate both the comments and, you know, knowing that this is gonna move forward in however way we have it worded. I have no problem with being more specific, as Sharon has suggested, to change number four, the county responsibility, that the county agrees, you know, to spend this money specifically on this museum. We can, I think that's a simple fix, and it resolves everybody's concerns. And then I say, if we make that fix, then, you know, we should move it forward as quickly as possible and get this all resolved. You know, I mentioned this in the work session, I think, I truly believe that, you know, I mean, I'm a department head at the county, and I know that, you know, multiple line items I have cover different expenses, but, you know, they can cross over at times. And so, my assumption was that this is, you know, county museums, that it was covering all of them, but it would be specifically as the agreement's written.
I heard two things. I heard the Schmink Museum, and then I was hurt earlier, somebody said unless otherwise agreed.
Yeah, I.
Which means to me that they can come back and say, hey, this year, we really need to do something else a little more.
Let me state this and see, and I'll still make the motion, but I'm not sure I've got it worded correctly, and maybe you may wanna change it. So, no second should be given if it's not how we want it worded. I move that the council approve the MOU agreement between the county and the town of Lakeview with regards to the, uh, memorandum of understanding, as we are dealing with, with the change of, changing number four stating that the town donation be restricted to the Schmink Museum unless the two councils jointly agree to a change in that designation of funds.
We are, we're not really voting to approve the whole memo at this point.
No, I move, I, oh, you just wanna change.
Well, are we not, not voting on making a change in our draft, is what I'm understanding.
No, that's what, that's what my motion says to do.
Okay.
To accept it with that change.
And submit it to the county for their review.
Which, I am a second, I agree with that.
Because we can always change our mind, and you want that.
And they may come back and have something a little different.
Oh, yeah.
This is.
So, we have a motion, we need further discussion on that. So, we have a motion, second, I'm not going to repeat the whole thing. To vote on Sharon's motion. So, all in favor, say aye. Aye. I'll vote, vote for Karen's aye.
That's fair.
You seconded the motion.
Aye.
Okay.
Sharon.
At the point of inquiry, who, does the D.A.R. no longer own the Schmink Museum?
There is a process of turning it over to the county, but hopefully that.
If the D.A.R. is in favor of just whatever, I've been having this circulation out there.
The D.A.R. is in favor of, I think, from what I understand, they are wanting to turn it over to the county to manage, and we would just be helping to support it.
It would also be a county museum.
It would be a county museum.
Right. It wouldn't work, like I said, I haven't heard of it yet.
The Schmink Museum has really been a thorn in their side for a number of years. They don't have the personnel, the staff, and they will not accept volunteers who are not D.A.R. members. And the D.A.R. membership age range is between 86 and 94. So, it's kind of hard to expect them to run it on a daily basis. They have money to support it, they don't like to spend those monies on something down here. They don't think our county is, or especially our town, is very supportive. We proved that wrong. So, if we can get away from the D.A.R.
Any other questions, comments? If not, we will close meeting at 5:04. Thank you all for coming.